Welcome back. You're watching HFO TV, co-sponsored by AMF Capital, the Valchanek Law Firm, the Butler Exchange Group, and the construction firm J.R. Johnson.
Welcome back to HFO TV. This is Greg Frick, partner at HFO Investment Real Estate. And today, we're going to do a video chat meeting with what's going on with Mingus Maps. He's actually running for Portland City Council seats. There's four of the five that are up. And I want to thank Mingus for taking the time to get together with us and kind of share why he's running for the City Council seat. And thank you again, Mingus.
Sure. And how are things in your world? I can imagine it must be a tsunami of challenges.
Yes, and like I said, a lot of the help and the funding, you know, it's a question of, you know, is it coming federally? Is it going to be through the state? Is it city? I know the city set up, you know, for kind of small businesses, they can go in through Prosper Portland and get some, you know. But question came up, well, you know, I own, somebody owns some small units. Do they count? No, because they're thinking there are going to be federal relief there. So it's, it's the next two weeks. I kind of felt multifamily was a little behind in terms of the true effect as these commercial tenants were feeling it, you know, for the whole month of, for most of the month of March, and are typically maybe more proactive in talking with their owner and saying, hey, this is what we've got to do. Multifamily, it's going to be interesting on what we see with the tenants and how that works and, you know, what really happens, so.
Do you have an agenda for what you want or need from the city, from the state, from the feds?
I expect there'll be a lot of bumps. But you would think in a time like this, you would be more of a, you would hope more of a collaboration and maybe, you know, as we've talked about before, Mingus, you know, kind of how they've almost weaponized the whole property owner-tenant relationship, and that doesn't benefit anybody. That's the scary part.
And I hear you. And that's one of the reasons why I'm in this race is to kind of change the political culture around that. You know, I know that landlords and, you know, most of them or many of them are small mom and pops. Everyone's in the business for the right reasons. You know, there's no housing without, you know, someone who owns the house. And, you know, I view this whole unfortunate war against property owners as a larger symptom of something that's gone wrong in our, I hope we can change that.
Yeah, so let me talk a little bit. I mean, what's kind of, you know, you've been out running. I mean, you used to be at the city. I used to, you know, in the community policing as well. I mean, just the whole tenor that's kind of changed within the city. I mean, which I think is part of your platform is to kind of getting back to, I don't want to say getting back to where it was, but getting back to more of a collaborative way to work together. And, you know, it's a win-win as, you know, it's instead of this win-lose thing for everybody. Kind of where do you, how do you see that kind of playing out? Or how do you, you know, kind of what are your kind of high points on that?
Oh, sure. Well, I think this is a really important question. You know, one of the reasons why I'm running is because I've been disappointed in the policymaking environment in Portland, especially in the last couple of years. You know, we have definitely a divisive and divided politics. It can be, what, neighborhood associations versus new immigrant groups, tenants versus landlords, police versus the people. I think this is insane. We all need to work together. You know, one of the reasons why I am the kind of guy who spends his life doing public policies. I grew up in Oregon at a time when we were really good at making public policy. You know, we reclaimed the waterfront. We invented a really great public transportation system. We invented the Neighborhood Association system.
Right.
But, you know, today, and if you take a look at the things that we did right during that time, I think one of the things we did right was the way we approached solving problems, which was to invite people to the table, to get people's views on both, you know, their concerns and needs and to elicit their best ideas and to, you know, develop policies out of that. Obviously, we don't see that anymore. Indeed, you know, one of the things that I'm so disappointed at are the number of folks who are just not even able to get a meeting with City Hall anymore because the incumbent has decided how he or she is going to vote. And that's a terrible way to try to solve public policy, especially at a moment like this when, number one, you know, we have this truly epic public health crisis playing out. And we have an economic crisis unlike anything since literally the Great Depression. As you, I think we were talking off-camera beforehand, one of the things that is sobering about this moment is that there really is not a rulebook. You know, we might have to go back to the sort of housing crisis of 2007 or something to just see things this crazy. But if we're going to survive this, and we will survive this, what we have to do is come together and get, you know, all the stakeholders to have to take. And that's especially true with housing, right? You know, I understand that renters are crunched, but so are homeowners. And, you know, ultimately, these financial institutions are crunched too. And we have to kind of get everyone at the table, state, federal, local, to figure out how we're going to make this work. I believe we have something like $100 million in federal aid coming to the city of Portland. You know, as far as I can tell, even the mayor doesn't understand how these dollars are actually going to get spent. But we need to figure this out, and we need to figure it out right away. This is one of these situations where every day counts. You know, as we sit here on April 1, and everyone's paying their first rent or mortgage, making their first regular mortgage payment in the pandemic era. So, you know, that's one of the reasons why I want the city to form a, some sort of high-level policy coordination team. You know, we really do need the city, the county, the state, and someone from the feds to sit down and just talk about how this is going to work in the context of the Portland metro area. And of course, we need to have, I think, a business community there too. And, you know, renters tenant rights, you know, representing the good news of people. And I also think that we, it seems to me like we're going to need a special legislative session coming up sometime really soon too, partly just to figure out, number one, how the state can step in and help us move forward. And also, the state, you know, is going to be this incredibly important, I think, mediator between the feds, local government. So I really want to see the governor both talking to Washington and talking to us here in Portland.
And are you seeing, I mean, do you have a sense that's happening? Or is it just a, it seems right now it's just really, really fragmented as to...
I would tell, I'll tell you the truth. You know, I spend a good part of my day, every day, just trying to study to figure out who's doing what. One of the things I see is a real lack of organization. Frankly, you know, one of the things that happens when I look at City Hall is that you have every commissioner kind of freelancing it, doing their own thing to really understand what the city's doing. You literally kind of need to visit every commissioner's individual webpage to see what reforms or what solutions they're offering. Again, this kind of gets back to one of the reasons and one of the things I want to do on council. I think it's time for the city of Portland to hire a city manager to coordinate services across city bureaus. I know this because, you know, I've worked for the city. And I know that, you know, people, and we all know if you've ever interacted with the city, Portland is famous for siloing its services. And that's really bad public policy on a lot of different levels. You know, one of the reasons on a day-to-day level it's bad is that if you look at the problems that Portland faces today, you know, they remain problems because they're complex. Let's think about homelessness. You know, homelessness is not just a matter of housing. It's also a public safety issue. It's often a mental health issue. And so if you want to have an effective houselessness policy, one of the things you need to do is be able to knit together different programs that serve those different interests or concerns. We can't do that in Portland. Indeed, the whole point of our mission form of government is preventing us from doing that. And that's something relatively concrete and tangible like houselessness. Now, let's imagine that we face the aftermath of public health, the worst public health crisis in a century, plus an economic crisis like we haven't seen in nearly a century. Coordination is going to be more important than ever. And I'll tell you, I don't see it. And that disappoints me. I hope people come together. I applaud Ted for some of his leadership at this moment. I also see, you know, the rest of the city council kind of sitting back waiting to see what the mayor does. I also see the mayor and the governor sort of tugging and, you know, pulling and tugging and playing strategic games. And then we have the county, which has an incredibly important role here. And I don't see, you know, a tightly coordinated response between the county and the city. Indeed, one of my concerns is that I think in many ways the city, very much like homelessness, is kind of kicking this problem over to the county. And I understand that, you know, there's a health issue there, issue here. But more than ever, we need to coordinate and rally all of our resources and all of our best ideas. And we need to listen to each other. You know, one of the things that really concerns me too is that as we face this crisis, both at an emotional level and I think as a policy level, we need to come together as a city. And one of the ironies of this moment is that we can't come together in the ways that we normally do, right? We can't come out together to share a hug. And we can't come together to have a public meeting to talk about how we get out of this. You know, I applaud everybody for like jumping on Zoom and figuring it out. And, you know, I think it's worked okay so far for the past two weeks. But we need to do a lot more of this. And frankly, some of the programs that I think we need to start moving on, and that is frankly, on the recovery and management stuff. How do we get resources to, you know, real human beings and to businesses? I'm, I don't give us a very good grade. I think we have a lot of work.
So would you, I mean, back to kind of the election coming up, would you look at changing the form of government in Portland? I mean, we all heard about.
Absolutely. I like to say that my top four priorities are making progress in homelessness, bringing more affordable housing to the city, changing the way that we elect members of city council. Right now, every member of city council is elected at large. I think it's time that we begin to elect members of city council through neighborhood-based electoral district.
Which is more typical, typical for cities. I mean, that's, yeah, what are the oddballs?
And the city manager then. And so, you know, I think we need to take seriously the sort of the top policy priorities that we have, like affordable housing and homelessness. And then we have to actually deal with the structural problems that, you know, keep our city from, you know, being good at government, you know, making effective public policies that also represent what, you know, Portlanders want. In fact, we've gone in the exact opposite direction. Worse that, we've gotten worse at making public policy, and our politics have become, you know, divisive and unconstructive.
So back to, you know, one of your other pillars is homelessness. I mean, what are some of the ideas that you would look at once you get, you know, get into office?
Oh, sure. Well, one of the, you know, one of the things I think it's important to recognize is that homelessness is a complex problem. There are many different kinds of homeless people. You know, right now, at this moment, for example, we are, many of our friends and neighbors are going through a hard time because their places of employment have closed or their businesses are forced to close. And so, you know, those folks, as we know, are going to have trouble making rents or making their mortgage payments. And we need to think about services for them. That's why one of my top priorities when I want city council is to radically increase the amount of funding we have for things like emergency rentals. You know, I think the most effective way to bring down the absolute number of people who sleep on the streets and are houseless is to prevent people from losing their homes in the first place. And I think, and one of the most important things and the most cost-efficient ways for the city to intervene there is to provide, you know, people who are just down on their luck for a little bit of time with, you know, funds to actually pay their rent. That's 10 times cheaper than trying to build another shelter bed. Then, of course, we have another population out there. You know, the folks who sleep on the streets every night. If you take a look at the stats for Portland, it looks like we probably have about 2,000 or 3,000 street campers. You know, these are folks who are out there 365 days a year. At least half of those folks suffer from drug addiction, mental health issues, or disability. In other words, there are significant reasons why those folks are on the streets, and it's going to be hard to get them off the streets. That's why I think the city is just going to have to buckle down and bite the bullet and provide that community with, you know, very, very affordable housing. You know, we just passed a big housing bond. So we have, you know, about 1,500 or so new units coming on of affordable housing. One of the things I think we need to do is to set aside some of those units for folks who have been on the streets chronically. But, you know, I think we also have to have some expectations about people getting better and staying better. So that, you know, I want to connect housing to social services, wraparound housing that we all talk about. So that, you know, when you get, you know, we reach out to the chronically homeless, you know, give them a key, but also make sure that that key to a new home is also attached to, you know, a doctor's appointment. So they go in, you know, so they can get inside and actually get the services to stabilize. And I think those are some of the things that we can do to make the situation better. If we stop the inflow of new homeless people, our number should go down. And if we finally concentrate on that hardcore community who sleep on the streets every day and recognize reality that we're just going to have to provide those folks with housing and also look at why they haven't, you know, why they haven't been sheltered, which is the mental health issue and the drug addiction issues, and provide those, I think that we can actually see the number of folks who sleep on our streets decrease over time.
And you think some of that, the part of it is just, I don't want to say it's a disconnect, but almost sometimes I feel like on the homeless thing, you have different camps trying to address, you know, kind of each kind of group, and there's no coordinated effort. Not that you say what you're going to do. I mean, there's not, the other thing is, I think our city's famous for, you know, kind of the one, one thing fits all kind of fix, which ends up maybe helping one percentage, but then it makes it worse, the unintended consequences on the other side. It's just, it's very hard, I think, in homelessness, we've seen is this, you know, you really almost have, like you said, divide it out and say, for this group, we're doing this. For this one, we're doing this, and not one size fits all.
I think, I think that's exactly right. And that's the reality. And I won't lie to you. There are some people who sleep on the streets who are never going to come inside. I've done a lot of work with the houseless community. And, you know, another reason why people are houseless or some people are houseless is they're kind of anti-authoritarian. They don't want to be told what to do, and those folks are never going to come in. On the other hand, you know, we are going to have people who, you know, the working moms who, you know, might be not be able to make rent this month because the restaurant they worked in is closed, and, you know, they desperately want homes. And I think we can do services for them. And, you know, we have to recognize that if you're, you know, if you have schizophrenia and you're addicted to meth and you've been sleeping on the street for seven years, it's going to take a significant and frankly, expensive intervention to, you know, to stabilize you. On the other hand, I also, you know, I've been out here, I live in Portland, and I've been campaigning full-time since July. And I can't tell you the number of like businesses that I encounter. Literally, it's something which happens every day where people say, you know, I can't deal with Portland anymore. You know, we have to, you know, call the cops to get someone who is having a mental health breakdown in front of my building or in my shop, you know, or I have a fleet of cars and someone has gone through and cut the gas lines to seal the gas, which also costs me thousands of dollars. You know, we have to just intervene. I think one of the things that's made Portland special is the quality of life that we have all been privileged to enjoy. And the sort of answer of houselessness and drug addiction really undermines that quality of life. It makes Portland, it steals the thing that makes our city special. And I think that, you know, as the adults in the room at this critical moment in history, it's our obligation to get this right and take deliverability issues seriously.
Well, I think that's part of it. I mean, I think you hit one of the things. I mean, just, it just sometimes feels like from a policy standpoint, it's maybe not enough adults in the room, and the ones that are in there don't want to look at any other possibility. So it's a very closed-minded way to try to get things done, so.
And I think Portland also has, to both our credit and our detriment, we are very cognizant of people's rights, and we don't want to sort of be cruel to homeless people. And I applaud our humanity there. But at the same time, it's not humane to just do nothing on the situation. I think it's time that we make change and have the courage to do that. And sometimes that means to have the courage to embrace some ideas that even two or three years ago, we might not have been excited about. A good example is Wapato. You know, I think when we have folks sleeping on the street in the snow, I have a hard time understanding why, you know, the private sector, the nonprofit community can't come together, open that facility up for folks who want to use it. You know, this is the kind of change and the kind of, this is the kind of change we have to have the courage to embrace, even if it's not, you know, we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the better than.
Yeah, sometimes you're not going to get to 100%, but, you know, getting to 80 or 90 is better than doing nothing at all. Or, yeah. So in terms of, so, you know, our audience is a lot of property owners and multifamily. Within Portland, there's been a lot of, you know, screening, a lot of, I would say, added regulations put on housing providers. Kind of what are your thoughts on, you know, maybe what that does or how it's going? And what would you do kind of differently, maybe, you know, in changing that moving forward?
Oh, sure. And this is another conversation I literally have every day. You know, so much of the affordable housing in Portland is provided by, you know, mom and pop homeowners who maybe have an extra house. You know, let's say grandma passed away and left the house to you. And you rent that house out at an affordable rate because that's the right thing to do, and it's frankly also the easy thing to do. But obviously, that, that approach, which has been sort of the backbone of our affordable housing strategies for decades, is not tenable anymore. And it's frankly, it's not tenable because of practices which are coming out of City Hall. You know, both complying with the new housing rules and the costs that are associated with the new housing rules require you to, you know, be a very different kind of landlord. You know, you can't be in this business anymore unless you have a tenant. You kind of can't have the, you don't have enough flexibility to take risks on people. One of the ironies about the, these new rules is that I think it was supposed to provide tenants with protections. But what I hear when I talk to landlords is, you know, I just can't, you know, the expense of dealing with a bad tenant are so great that I can't take a risk on, you know, the mom who I'm not so sure about or doesn't have the best.
Well, it's so restrictive, and it's such a tight box that you used to be able to, you know, make some adjustments. And again, again, there's, you know, there's bad, there are bad property owners. There's bad tenants. But you guys, you know, we've tried to talk to city councils and some of the rules you put in, you know, who are you trying to protect? You know, what does that number look like? And now you're going to, for the detriment of everybody else, now you've, you know, and again, you know, I'm not saying these people, you know, there's just, the way they look at it, like I said, it's almost weaponized this relationship between property owners and tenants, and that doesn't benefit anybody.
Oh, yeah. And in my experience, if you actually get into the politics, that's exactly what's happened. Is that, you know, housing policy has literally been weaponized. You know, part of the point is to inflict arm on your industry.
Right, which I think, you know, is, short-term, maybe that sounds great, but I think long-term, it's been, you know, we are in a society where you can't public, the public-owned stuff cannot handle all the housing. It's just, you know, we're not in a, you know, common society.
I don't even think it, even in the short term, it sounds great. You know, housing is a partnership between individuals and property owners and lenders. And we, I think we have to have some faith in each other, and we have to work together. And the environment is evolving. You know, there's not, there's probably never going to be a stable, single solution to the moment. You know, the world looks radically different today than it did even a month ago, which is a reminder that, you know, we have to keep talking. We have to reinvent ourselves every day. And I think that as we move forward and figure out what our new housing policies are going to look like. And I think that's one thing is that, you know, this crisis is certainly going to have, is going to force us to think about how we think about and approach housing policies. You know, we need to all come to the table. We need to make, be sure that, you know, housing is both affordable, both for the people who live in it. It represents a good investment for the people who are homeowners. And we need to make sure that there's, you know, credit out there so that we can maintain our buildings and buy new ones and, you know, continue to grow. Because we also have a quarter billion people coming to the city over the next 20 years. So our work is hardly done. Indeed, you know, the challenges continue to accumulate, and we just really need to be on our game right now. You know, what happens over the next, I used to think that, you know, what happens, what our city looks like in 10 years will very much be determined by what our next city council does. And I, that's more true than ever. You know, what our city looks like in even two or three years is going to be a product of the decisions that get made.
We have, what, four, four of the five seats coming up for election? So it's a huge, huge direction.
Absolutely, you know, and that's, and I'll tell you, I'm a little bit of a political historian. I don't know if you, for those of you who don't know me, I have a PhD in political science. I'm a little bit of a political historian. Certainly, I'm deeply interested in the history of Portland, and that very much informs my approach to policymaking here. And you're right, we have 80% of the council on ballot in this election cycle. That has never happened before in the history of our city. And with, you know, so much on the table, it's very likely that our city is going to move in a different direction as a result of this election. And that actually, frankly, I think is good because the status quo, I would argue, is unacceptable. I mean, that's why we're all here today. The policies and the politics that have been put out by City Hall have been toxic and dysfunctional, and we can't afford to do this for another four years. And I hope to offer some alternatives. But listen, you know, I'm not, I'm not made to match. You know, I know I'm smart enough to know what I don't know, and that's actually a powerful insight. I don't know everything about housing policy, so I need you at the table. And I also, and I also need renters at the table. I mean, I need homeowners at the table. And let's have that conversation. And it's, you know, I'm in this race because that conversation hasn't happened. I'd like to say, and it's true, and this is me putting on my political scientist hat, you know, democracy is not just the vote that happens on Election Day. And it's not just the vote that happens on city council, in city council chambers. It's the discussion which happens before those votes. The thing that's been missing from Portland is that discussion. And I want to bring that back. And we have to bring that back now because there's no, this is a whole new world. We are inventing what the economy looks like, and we're going to invent what government looks like in the age of pandemics, where a butterfly can flap its wings in China, and then a month later, Portland is shut down. And the world is shut down, you know. We're not quite ready for that moment organizationally and even politically. But we can get there, and this election is part of it. But, you know, also, every day matters, every conversation matters.
How has this pandemic changed, you know, from a, not a policy, but how you're running the race? I mean, you can't go out now to do a town hall. You can't go, you know, shake, I mean, so as a, I'm just curious, as a candidate, is it like, I mean, it's...
I'll tell you, you know, we, I've been campaigning full-time since July. So, you know, been out under normal circumstances. I'm now doing two or three house parties a week, doing three or four meetings a day. You know, so it's kind of seven, typically kind of, in their perfect world, I try to shake 100 hands a day and have about seven meetings a day. And then all of a sudden, about a week and a half ago, all of that stopped.
Right.
And we're trying to figure out how to, how to move forward. And this is part of what leadership is, is like evolving and kind of reinventing yourself as the world changes. So we're doing a lot more Zoom meetings, that's for sure, trying to figure out how to get good at this platform. I basically spend my days on the phone now. I probably try to make about 60 phone calls a day, both to, you know, frankly, I'll tell you the truth, I'm prioritizing fundraising for this race, and that's always been one of my strategies. I'm proud of the fact that I have more individual donors than Sam and Chloe, and I've raised more dollars than Sam and Chloe. I'm doing public financing for this race, which means I have a cap of about a quarter million dollars I can raise for the primary. And I have about $50,000 to go, and I think I can get there within the next month. So that's kind of one of my top priorities. And then we're going to take that quarter million dollars, and I'm going to send out a truly ridiculous number of brochures of mailers. a truly ridiculous number of brochures. So we'll send out about 100,000 pieces of veil to folks. We're up phone banking. And we're also trying to take this moment seriously. I'm actually kind of grateful to be on the phone as much as I am now because it gives me an opportunity to check in with Portlanders from all corners of the city. And so I can feel, at a time when we're very isolated, I feel kind of privileged to be able to peek into people's lives and businesses to see how we're holding up. And the great news is, I think Portlanders are so far taking the social distancing seriously and that's part of the solution. I think so far, people are kind of hanging in there, but I won't lie to you, like every, with every day, I can feel the, especially the financial crisis.
The stress is getting heavier and heavier.
And so I, especially until those federal dollars make it into Portland, I'm very concerned. The classic stat, which is not entirely correct, I think, but it's something like 40% of Americans couldn't, don't have $400 in savings to navigate a crisis. And literally, everyone in Portland has probably been put out by more than $400 by this current situation. And so it's a real issue. On the other hand, I think we're doing okay now. I think people are patient, but we don't have very much time. We've got to really work together and that's why I want that special legislative session. I want to really see and hear from the feds and frankly, I'm not in meetings with the feds very often. I don't see them sort of around. We need our congressional leadership to add some money by the shirt collar and bring them to these Zoom meetings to figure out when these funds are going to hit and who qualifies and really begin to invent the next couple of years.
Well, I want to, we've got the information on our site where the people can find out and donate to you. I know you're busy and thanks for taking the time today. And like I said, I think the big thing in this state that we're in is people have to work together. I mean, it's, if anything, maybe this, it pushes you apart because we've got to be six feet apart, but I think it maybe shows that if we don't work together, we're not going to be able to solve these, because these are not simple problems. I mean, homelessness is a complex problem. Affordable housing is not a simple problem and we can't continue to kind of push different ideas, different viewpoints away. We need to get all stakeholders like you've brought up and it just, I think Portland is great, we've got a lot of history, but for the last time, it's just been clunky in terms of how things function and it's very, not even one-sided, but just narrowly focused and not really looking at the big picture. So it's great to hear a candidate that's kind of looking at it like, hey, there's a different way, a different approach to try to address these.
Well, thank you. And I also want to thank your membership for the housing you provide. And on a personal level, I send everyone my best. Take the social distancing thing seriously, although I know it's getting old. And if we work together and trust each other, we will get through this together. Also, if anyone wants to learn more about my campaign, go to mingusmaps.com. My policy issues are up there. You can order a lawn sign, make a donation and have a conversation.
And we'll put that up on our site so they can get it as well. And I'm figuring, once I figure out how to do this Zoom thing with the social distancing, it might be done, but we'll know how to do a new platform though for meetings.
We could do meetings on the fly. I'm kind of excited for it. I think that Zoom will be part of our future.
Yes, all right. Thanks again and we'll see you next time on HFO TV.
Thank you.
All right.
Our entire office specializes in multifamily real estate, making HFO the largest multifamily brokerage in the Pacific Northwest. Your success is our passion. Build your legacy with HFO. Call 503-241-5541 or visit our website at hfoe.com for more information.